Hello, I'm Mark Ellis, Barnstable Town Manager. And this is my Town Manager Update for the period of June twenty-fifth through July sixteenth. Town Council concluded their budget hearings on the proposed FY twenty twenty-six operating budget back on June twenty-sixth, and the budget's approved. And um it's available on our website if you'd like to see it. And we have various printed copies um pretty much at request in Town Hall. Um, the Town Manager will also, I will issue instructions to our municipal departments for the FY twenty twenty-seven budget by mid-September. So we got a little bit of a break from budget period, but budget season, but we'll be right back into it shortly. And for all budget information, please go to our website. Today, I sent a letter to the Massachusetts Commissioner of Public Health. Attached a copy of the letter, if you'd like to take a look at it, requesting that the Department of Public Health take additional proactive steps to address the growing public health concerns related to PFAS. Given the widespread exposure to PFAS in drinking water, consumer products, and the environment, I urge DPH to initiate an effort to educate healthcare providers and insurers in the Commonwealth about the risks associated with PFAS, as well as the clinical and public health importance of addressing these risks in medical settings. I also emphasize the need to work with relevant state agencies and insurers to recognize PFAS testing and treatment as eligible and necessary medical expenses. This includes ensuring, in ensuring, insurance coverage for blood testing and other diagnostic measures, as well as treatment or mitigation strategies. I'll keep our community informed as we progress on this matter. On June thirtieth, the town received a million, a little over a million dollars, a million twenty thousand in opioid abatement funds. A total expenditure as of this date from the abatement funds is about three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And this includes three hundred and thirty-two thousand in grant distributions to seven organizations. The town's expecting to receive an additional two-point-two million dollars of abatement funds uh through twenty thirty-nine. Uh, the town's looking forward to uh hiring uh an additional contractor to assist in the administration of these funds, including grant application management and monitoring. So we'll keep you advised um as we progress on this this important effort to distribute these grant funds. I'm frequently asked about the status of the Centerville Playground and Parking Lot Project. Um, we've completed our public bids on that, and the construction contract has been awarded um to Dandell Construction. They had a kickoff meeting on-site today with town staff, and they discussed the site and the schedule uh for the upcoming work. Additionally, a playground equipment is scheduled to be delivered by the end of this month and will be accepted and stored by the contractor uh until installation. The contractor anticipates mobilization at the site as early as next week. Throughout construction, access to the Centerville Recreation Building facilities will be limited. While the physical building itself will remain open and accessible for scheduled programming, staging will take place in the back parking lot, and as a result, the lot will be closed to the public. DPW staff are preparing a media release and pertinent communication materials as it relates to the upcoming construction activities. Project remains on the previous communicated schedule with an anticipated completion by the spring of twenty twenty-six. On July ninth, the Cape-like Compact Governing Board elected David Anthony, the town's representative to the board, to become the next chair. A vacancy in this position was created when the former chair stepped down and left the board last month. This is an important juncture for the Compact as the Cape-like Compact Board is currently in the midst of seeking a new Compact Administrator as Maggie Downey has announced her retirement this coming spring, twenty twenty-six, after thirty years of service. Thank you, Maggie. She's done a great job. David has represented the town's ratepayers, businesses, and the town's energy interests on the governing board since his appointment in two thousand and six. He served on the executive board um as the Cape-like Compact's secretary for over ten years. The Cape-like Compact manages a successful energy efficiency program for the residents of Cape Cod, saving millions of dollars in energy costs, providing competent power supply contracts for over two-hundred-thousand resident ratepayers, and plays a critical role in the advocacy for its members and Cape residents on energy issues. On the ninth, I'm sorry, the Ninth Annual Unity Day, uh presented by the People of Action, the Barnstable Police Department, and the Town of Barnstable will be held on the Hyannis Village Green Friday, August first, from four to seven P M. The event is intended to welcome and engage the community and local police together in a fun, inclusive, and memorable celebration that shows the Town of Barnstable is a special and unique place with strong and caring community bonds. We're excited that the Breakaway X Grill will be on hand again this year to cook up burgers and hot dogs. The event is free and open to all, and will include food, gluten ice cream, music, dance, and fun activities for all ages. Residents and visitors are encouraged to bring their own chairs and blankets and join for a beautiful summer evening on the Hyanna Screen. That concludes my Town Manager's Report. And um coming next is the Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn and the Communications Director Lynn Poyant with an enforcement update. Kate Maldonado, Planning and Development Director, I'm sorry, Planning and Development Department Senior Planner, uh will provide an update on flow-neutral, neutral and local comprehensive plan. And Kelly Colby, from the Department of Public Works, will provide an update on Water Resource Management, including the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, here to give an update on the internal working group established to look at enforcement efforts across all town departments. Joining me today is our Director of Communications Lynn Poyant, who will lead us through some recent changes to our website in support of these efforts. First, I'd like to remind everyone of our team composition listed here, each having their own set of responsibilities and associated authorities. Myself, Hyannis Fire Chief Peter Burke, Barnstable Police Chief Jeanne Chellis, Building Commissioner Florence, Director of Communications Poyant, Director of Asset Management David Anthony, Director of Planning and Development Jim Cupford, Town Attorney Karen Nobur, Assistant Town Attorney Allison Cagliano, Director of Marine Environmental Affairs Derek Lawson, G I S Manager Alicia Messier, Director of Licensing Erin Logan, and our Parking Program Manager Peter Berlin. Not every department is represented, and others will be added as necessary moving forward. As part of today's update, I'm going to walk through the timeline previously presented with quarterly goals listed below the timeline and associated milestones shown above. A tremendous amount of work has been input into these efforts over the past six months, not the least of which is simply getting all of these folks together every two weeks to discuss enforcement efforts across all departments. I'm extremely happy to report that we are on schedule with all goals and milestones, with the exception of a Town Council Workshop on the Use of Town Property and Special Events that has been pushed to August or September in order to accommodate other items on Town Council agendas. Our goals in the, let's see, our goals in the first quarter were to establish a team with regular recurring meetings, identify problem areas, implement immediate solutions where possible, apply structure on how to tackle the larger issues, and assign leads to each. Our first milestone was completed in January as we began regular meetings. Our second milestone was started in February when we released a video explaining how to communicate with the Town of Barnstable. Communications was quickly identified as a concern, and this video was the first immediate action we undertook. With complaint-based, with complaint-based enforcement, it is imperative that residents know where to go. As I mentioned earlier, Lynn Poyant will be walking through some of the follow-on actions in this category, including recent adjustments to the town website to enhance residents' understanding. Our third mile structured our work into three areas: processes, systems, and laws. Processes and systems are the tools town staff use to enforce the laws. The line you see drawn between processes and systems and laws is there to highlight the line of authority between the Town Manager and Town Council. For illustrative purposes, it gives you an idea of the items that our group will take action on, for systems and processes, and those that our group will review and make suggestions, but will require more public process and action by others. Our goals for the second quarter included the initial draft and potential regulations, ordinance or changes to existing laws for consideration to address gaps or shortfalls often blamed on the lack of enforcement and the public process required for each. Evaluation of current systems, including OpenGov, Uranicus, and others, to address the lack of a forward-facing complaint system. Lastly, we had hoped to hold a Town Council Workshop on Town Property and Special Events held throughout town. There's been a significant increase in the number and size of events in recent years worthy of a Town Council discussion. As mentioned, this has been pushed out a couple of months due to other Town Council priorities. Milestones we had for the second quarter included categories of parking, home occupation, and budget. Commercial vehicle parking in residential neighborhoods is an issue of concern that needed more than a simple increase in enforcement. Therefore, our team drafted a commercial vehicle parking ordinance for consideration. It will be on the Town Council Agenda on the twenty-first of August as a first read and referral to Planning Board. Home occupation, another area of concern, which fits hand-in-glove with commercial vehicle parking, is the home occupa-, home occupations that disrupt residential neighborhoods. Our team has drafted recommend, recommended changes to our existing home occupancy ordinance for consideration. This will be on the seventeen-July Town Council Agenda as a first read and referral to the Planning Board. Concurrently, Inspection Services Department is establishing a home occupation licensing program with ID card, annual expiration, and renewal with suspension and revocation hearing process. We anticipate this being brought forward this fall. Our hope is that by moving the ordinances and the licensing program concurrently, both will be brought to Town Council at the same time this fall, thereby allowing Town Council to approve enforcement resources at the same time at, in the same meeting where they consider adopting the new ordinances. We are happy to report that Town Council approved all budget requests for systems and equipment to support these efforts, as well as additional personnel to address long-term shortfalls, including a new conservation agent and admin sport, support and inspectional services. Barnstable I I T Department has finalized the scope of work for the public-facing complaint tracking system within OpenGov. We are now getting our contract finalized and funding allocated. Once these steps are complete, our project kickoff meeting will be scheduled with OpenGov and key Barnstable staff members in the coming weeks. Recent accomplishments. Here is a quick list of the most significant Quality of Life Group actions to date. Our Legal and Inspection Services Departments have collaborated on ca-, on cases to compel compliance. Allison Cagliano has been a tremendous addition to our legal team and particularly helpful in working with Inspection Services to build cases. Several longstanding cases have been resolved. Our Barnstable Police Department's removal from civil service at the Town Council Meeting on June fifth. As I mentioned during the Town Council Meeting on the fifth, this is by far the most significantly impactful action taken to increase the quality of life in our town. We anticipate this will allow the Barnstable Police Department to fill many long-term vacancies and eventually fully staff critical specialty units, such as our Community Impact Unit. We also passed special legislation for Marine Environmental Affairs red lights. And as I mentioned, um on June fifth at the budget hearing, we did get approved new positions in Conservation, Inspection Services, and Marine Environmental Affairs. Our pending Town Council actions include home occupation and commercial vehicle, vehicle ordinances, first read being on the seventeenth in July and twenty-first of August respectfully. Use of Town Property Workshop will be held in this August-September timeframe. Inspection Service Department restructuring to include a new enforcement division at the September Town Council Meeting, along with our Home Occupational Licensing Program. We also have under development potential noise and nuisance ordinances. Our third-quarter goals include organizational changes to the Inspection Service Department to support enforcement. This will include proposed changes to the Town Code and long overdue fee schedule adjustments and public hearings to support the necessary resources. Without these resources, we will not be able to adequately enforce. Our third-quarter milestones include the next step on home occupation, with changes to the home occupation ordinance being brought forward, and commercial vehicle ordinance, potential changes to our noise ordinance, and potentially a new nuisance ordinance, depending on the effectiveness of our other home occupancy efforts. We want to address the concerns, however, it needs to be a balanced approach, and there is not consensus on these issues, and making changes to or creating new regulations may prove challenging. Our fourth-quarter goals and milestones will be further developed in the coming months, but include finalizing new regulations and ordinances, public discussion, and prioritization, prioritization of future tasks, including regulatory agreement enforcement amongst others. I'd now like to turn it over to Director Poyant.
Thank you, Mr. Clyburn. Lynn Poyant, Director of Communications. As Mr. Clyburn mentioned, we released a video during the month of February on how to connect with the Town of Barnstable. It provided for a variety of ways people can connect with different towns and divisions in town. The video was released through a variety of methods, including our government-access television channel, social media channels, and our website. To the website, um you will see on this screen there are a couple of areas that have been highlighted: Contact Town Hall and Report a Problem. In order to provide our residents with better and more meaningful access to communicate with the town, we updated those two locations, as well as under Citizen Resources, the Report a Problem section. Under Contact Town Hall, there is now a Reported Problem or File Complaint button. It's the same button, and all of these items go to the same area on the website. You will see that you still have the ability to email at town.barnstable MA dot U S to report a problem. And I have to say that since our mobile app was in, um brought on, the number of items that come through the Town Main Mailbox have greatly increased. But you can click on the Town of Barnstable Report a Problem Contact Information, and you will find that we have collected three different pages of information. Um, it's a comprehensive list of potential, potential problem areas with contact information for the best way to report your issue. Um, and it's been created based upon staff input, as well as the inquiries that are made into the Town Main Mailbox. So you can see that there are building issues, health issues, licensing issues. There are things that are associated with our Marine Environmental Affairs, animal control, and DPW as well. So that concludes today's update, and thank you.
Hello, Kate Maldonado, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. On Thursday, July seventeenth, the Town Council will review a proposed amendment to the Town Code which would amend Chapter one hundred and eighty-four Sewers and Waters to add a new article that would establish a land-use control for flow-neutral wastewater management in coordination with the town's thirty-year Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. The objective of the amendment is to allow the town to be eligible for a loan of financial assistance from the State Revolving Fund with a more favorable interest rate equal to zero percent for eligible sewer projects. Establishing the land-use control would allow the town to be eligible for loans and financial assistance for water pollution abatement projects to remediate or prevent nutrient enrichment of a surface water body or a source of water supply in order to comply with effluent limitations or to comply with an EPA-approved total maximum daily load. The goal of the land-use control is to demonstrate that the overall wastewater flow in a sewered watershed will not increase as a result of the project for which a zero rate of interest is sought. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Additionally, on Thursday, July seventeenth, the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee will present the draft Local Comprehensive Plan to the Town Council. The Local Comprehensive Plan is a long-term vision and growth policy that will guide Barnstable's future over the next ten years with topic and location-specific goals and actions. The L C P was coordinated through a collaborative public process that identified a community vision, defined key issues and opportunities, and developed actionable items. The draft plan is accessible for review from the project website barnstablelcp.com via the document library.
Hello, Kelly Colby from the Department of Public Works, and I will be presenting our Water Resources Management Update. To start, we will take a look at sewer connections as part of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. As previously reported, we continue to see new sewer connections come online. As we have kicked off a new fiscal year, we are trying our best to most accurately report our sewer connections. As you may recall, we've had two sewer projects thus far that have been completed on time and on budget, the first being the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project, and the second being the Route twenty-eight East Sewer Expansion Project. Now, with both of those projects, there was infrastructure. That particular property, as part of Strawberry Hill Road, needed to be able to connect to the municipal sewer line and ultimately have their wastewater conveyed to the Water Pollution Control Facility. That infrastructure was the Route twenty-eight East or the Finney's Lane Pump Station, part of the Route twenty-eight East Sewer Expansion Project. So with that, connections have become available in rounds. You may recall our first round, our official notification for sewer connections, was at the beginning of the summer of twenty twenty-four. Since then, we've had two subsequent rounds of sewer connections, one in the fall of twenty twenty-four, and most recently this winter, the beginning of calendar year twenty twenty-five. So to, again, most accurately depict where we are in compliance with sewer connections, we've broken out the connections for each round, as well as the parcels available for each project, which brings us to a total of one hundred and seventy-four completed sewer connections out of the three hundred and twenty-four available sewer connections, which is just over fifty percent compliance. Now, keep in mind with each round of sewer connection, there is a sixth-month deadline per the Board of Health Sewer Connection Policy in which property owners must connect to the municipal sewer system. For each of those deadlines, there are properties that have, have received sewer extension, um extensions to request to, extensions to connect to the sewer system, excuse me, as well as some lengthier extensions per Board of Health public hearings. So there is a variety of deadlines for folks to connect, um which is where you're going to ultimately see some of that variance in connections. Overall, we're very pleased with the compliance that we've seen thus far and are very appreciative of the collaboration and work we've had with Barnstable's Health Division and Board of Health. Moving forward, you'll continue to see the Department of Public Works report sewer connections by round, as well as project, as we work towards that one hundred percent completion of sewer connections. We do still actively see connections coming online, um and we have a number of permits still open for connections throughout the summer. Next, we'll look at our active sewer expansion projects. I've broken these into categories, including active construction, procurement and contracting, advanced design, and preliminary design and survey. Active construction currently would be our Centerville Village North Phase project. As you may recall, that work has paused for the summer season, and we anticipate the contractor will resume in-road construction following the Labor Day holiday. In our initial planning meetings with our contractor, we do expect or anticipate um overnight work on Route twenty-eight to begin this fall as well. As you may recall, there's a small section of work sewer construction specifically on Route twenty-eight that will take place as part of this project. We also do anticipate to see crews mobilizing to the Mother's Park area this coming fall as well. So quite a bunch of activity to happen for, or to happen for the Centerville Village North Phase Sewer Construction Project. Additionally, we've made progress with our Route twenty-eight West project. As you may recall, this is the backbone truly of our sewer expansion, allowing us to expand sewer westward in town and ultimately reach the Three Bays, which is our most compromised waterway and abatement. Currently, we are reviewing bids for the construction contract and are anticipating awarding that construction contract over the next several weeks, in which that will keep us on schedule with a fall twenty twenty-five groundbreaking for the Route twenty-eight West Sewer Expansion Construction. Now, with that said, we will begin our property owner communications, as well as look to host our next public meeting with construction kickoff information sometime late summer, early fall. Additionally, in advanced design, we have two projects that are making great headway, the Centerville Village South Base, as well as the Finney's Lane Neighborhoods Project. We do anticipate the ninety percent design set plan to come in this, this July or August, so this summer, for Centerville Village South. And as a reminder, we did receive uh the appropriation for sixteen million dollars of construction funds, which was approved by Town Council during budget hearings in the C I P program this past spring. In order for that project to remain eligible for principal subsidy through the State Revolving Fund, we will need to, to award a construction contract about a year from now, by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So that is really the next milestone that we are working towards. Subsequently, we are also working on our final design plans for the Finney's Lane Neighborhoods Project. We anticipate the seventy-five percent design plan to come in this August, in which we will look to host a Status of Design Public Information Meeting sometime this fall. Our next round of private road utility easements, we anticipate, will be presented to Town Council this fall as well. And additionally, we have a number of various projects in some level of preliminary design or survey, which you can find in the box to the lower right-hand corner of your screen. Next, we have the two sixty-eight Stephen Street Pump Station, which is currently under construction. As you may recall, as previously reported, this contract was awarded to C C Construction, and since the contractor has mobilized to the site, two sixty-eight Stephen Street, in which the town has an easement uh for this pump station construction, the contractor has started their dewatering activities, and in collaboration with conservation, we have a water level monitoring plan as that work is underway. We actually anticipate the contractor beginning true excavation on the site this week. And as such, we've prepared notifications and have completed in-person outreach with various residential and commercial properties in the area. Now, just as a reminder, this specific pump station is made possible through a grant that was applied for by Barnstable's Planning and Development Division in twenty twenty-three. It's a state grant that we received for the installation of this pump station, which is necessary for the Proposed Housing Assistance Corporation housing project at this property. Additionally, the Water Pollution Control Facility, we have a number of projects that continue to see movement. The most significant update being that our bid submissions for our Nitrogen Removal and Headworks Improvement Project, our wastewater treatment facility upgrades, are currently under review. We anticipate being able to award that construction contract over the coming weeks, which will keep us on schedule with a fall twenty twenty-five start of construction. Additionally, effluent disposal evaluation is ongoing. We actually anticipate some conversations over the next several meetings with our C W P Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. And we, of course, continue our monthly meetings with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And then, as previously reported, the Bierce's Way Sewer Extension and Vacuum Sewer Removal Project is still underway. Work has paused for the summer season in roadwork, um but we do anticipate the contractor coming in after the Labor Day holiday to finish sewer main tie-ins and the abandonment of the vacuum sewer to help close out that project. Shifting over to our Water Supply Division, we have two projects that we continue to see active work. The first being Straight Wy Water Treatment Facility Project. We are currently preparing to award this construction contract, which is contingent on a supplemental appropriation order, which will be brought to Town Council. It's actually Agenda, Agenda Item twenty twenty-five. It's actually Agenda, Agenda Item twenty twenty five dash one ninety-four. Um you will see that as a public hearing and potential vote um at this town council meeting. As a reminder, this project proposes the construction of a new water treatment facility to replace the existing Straightway and Hyannis Port Water Treatment Plants upon completion. There are a number of project objectives that we're looking to meet with this project, as well as a variety of various communications that have been distributed to the community and a number of other project updates that can be found on the project page on the D P W's portion of the town website. Additionally, our Lead Service Line Inventory and Replacement Program continues. We have, our Phase Two report has been received and is in review with both D P W leadership and will be presented to the Barnstable Municipal, Municipal Water Board at their upcoming meeting on July twenty second. More information can also be found on the Town of Barnstable website on the D P W page under our projects for the Hyannis Water System. And lastly, just a few updates on communications and outreach across the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. We have a number of different events and outreach initiatives that will be taking place over the summer. Uh most notably, we have a new C W M P resident survey. This was really targeting um our youth and trying to engage the youth of our community as that has been something that we've heard over and over from town council and from various leadership that, you know, there is really this untapped audience here with our youth who are very, very environmentally sensitive, um well-educated, and really well-engaged on issues involving the environment. This survey has actually been broadened to not just serve our youth, but also really be open to all residents and visitors of Barnstable. Right now, we are promoting the survey through various young adult local library programs. We have sent it to the Youth Commission, and we are discussing ways to engage um with those, with Rec's Summer Program um through H Y C C. We do also have the survey available through the survey link seen below, barnstablewaterresources dot com slash survey, as well as available through a variety of Q R codes for some of our upcoming workshops and tabling that I'll talk about in a moment. Our next Sewer Connection Workshop is this week, Wednesday, July sixteenth, at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. This meeting will be hosted in the evening to try to capture some of the additional, some additional attendance as we've more recently been hosting these during the daytime hours. It will follow our standard format of reviewing the Homeowner Sewer Connection Guide, uh but will include some additional promotional items and just some general updates on the implementation of our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. We will post a summary of the presentation on barnstablewaterresources dot com. And then additionally, I mentioned some tabling events. Barnstable Water Resources will have informational tables at some of our town beaches this summer. Uh working in collaboration with the Rec Department, we will have tables at Craigville Beach, Cobles Beach, Douses Beach, and Kalmus Beach through mid-July and August. And the goal really is to increase awareness of the Barnstable Water Resources website, the Homeowner Sewer Connection Guide, and we'll also be promoting the My Barnstable app and hopefully getting some additional subscriptions there as well. We'll have educational materials as well as branded Barnstable Water Resources swag to really just get folks engaged um and aware that not only do we have sewer-related information on Barnstable Water Resources, but that we've also expanded the content on that website to include our abatement monitoring, our freshwater monitoring programs and projects, um general beach water quality updates, as well as drinking water information and resources. And then lastly, our team, this is really the time of year where we are out and about at a variety of association annual meetings. We have a number of meetings that we will be presenting at, both homeowners associations and civic associations throughout July and August. With that, that concludes our Water Resources Update. Thank you.